Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Joint Scrutiny Committee. I'm Paul Gleeson, I am the Chair of Corporate and Community Committee, which is the committee that would normally receive this report. My Vice Chair would normally be the Chair of our sister scrutiny committee, Environment and Performance, but they have tendered their apologies for this evening. And as such, my Vice Chair of Corporate and Community, councillor Susan Welbury, has kindly taken the role as Vice Chair tonight. Before we start, may I remind everyone in attendance this evening that this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. If members of the public are in attendance...
Are they? No, can't see anybody. It's a long way off.
No, that's why we can miss this bit. I will now move to part one of the agenda. The preliminary items. Apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chairman. We have apologies from councillors Stuart Evans, Patsy Marson, Bury Pierpoint, Claire Riley and Lina Savickian. And further apologies from our normal lead officer for the committee, the Deputy Chief Executive. Thank you.
Thank you. Second declarations of interest. I have a declaration. I am a board member of PSPL, appointed by this council. This, whilst PSPS is mentioned in this report tonight, it actually doesn't impact on my role as a director. And so I'm carrying on as chair. Public questions. To answer any written question received from members of the public no later than 5pm to clear working days prior to the meeting. For this meeting, the deadline is 5pm, Monday the 8th of July.
No questions, Chairman.
Thank you. This concludes the preliminary items. We now move to part two of the agenda. Item one, LGA Corporate Peer Challenge Report and Action Plan. A report by James Gilbert, Assistant Director, Corporate. This is our only item on the agenda. The Corporate Peer Challenge Report and Action Plan, which starts on page one of the Agenda Pack, presented by the portfolio holder, the leader of the council, who is supported by the report by James Gilbert, who is also acting as Lead Officer for this meeting. Councillor Dorrits.
Thank you, Chair. The council was subject to an LGA peer review in May of this year. And it's good practice that councils should undergo a peer review by the local government association every five years as part of the government's programme of sector-led improvement. The peer team that visited us was made up of members and officers from other councils and LGA officials. The team met with elected members, officers and partners of the council during their very short visit, and we have now received their report and recommendations. The recommendations don't actually differ from those that were fed back to the councillors at the end of the review. And I know that many of you were present for that session. Since that evening, the Cabinet has worked with officers to develop a detailed action plan, which is before you this evening in Appendix B. As you will see, there are many positive comments about this council, its selected members and officers, our ways of working and our innovative practices. These are all to be celebrated, but please know that we are not complacent. There are also areas where we can make improvements, and it is healthy for an organisation as large as this to look carefully at potential areas for development and areas where we can make progress. I am pleased that the peers recognised the passion and dedication of both councillors and officers alike, and have acknowledged that there is much good work taking place for the benefit of our residents. The scrutiny committee this evening is asked to note the report at Appendix A and provide your feedback to help shape the final action plan, the draft of which is Appendix B. And that will then go forward to Cabinet when it meets later this month. After Cabinet, we will share the report and final action plan on our website. So, Mr Chairman, I'd like to move the recommendations that... Oh, I don't know, do I move that? I don't move the recommendations, you committed us. Thank you, Chair. That's it.
Yeah, I mean, I can take you through the action plan if that's how you'd like to.
I think it would be sensible, I think, if we actually work our way through the action plan first, and then we can have questions and comments after that. Because whilst it's relatively straightforward, I think it would be better if we go through.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Good evening, councillors. Thank you for the invitation to attend. So Appendix B is the action plan, it's a draft action plan at the moment. The intention is following your feedback. It becomes a final action plan that we can publish, share with partners and make a commitment to deliver on over the next few months. Within the action plan, I think it's on slide three, we talk about the governance that will then sit around it. There'll be regular reporting into leadership teams, regular reporting into the leader of the council. But also, we're looking for Corporate and Community Scrutiny Committee to keep a watching brief over the delivery of the action plan on a six-monthly basis. So we'd be very grateful if you'd add that to your work programme. So we have got that level of scrutiny as we seek to deliver the actions that are set out. So turning on to the first page of the action plan, you'll see all the actions have a green RAG status in the right-hand column. They're green based on where we are at this point in time. If that status does change throughout the delivery of the action plan, once we've got a final version, that will clearly change to a different RAG rating. But essentially, left-hand column is the recommendation as proposed by the local government association. The action to be taken in the next column is the action that we're proposing. The council takes in response to that recommendation. The column that's blank on occasions at the moment is the evidence column. And that's how we will look to evidence to the LGA when they come back in the next year, when they come back for their review. What action has actually been undertaken to deliver on that? Because they'll want to see some substance and some evidence. We've then got the Lead Officer and the associated timescale. So the first action in the action plan was to develop and communicate widely a long-term strategic vision for the borough of Boston in collaboration with partners. We know we've adopted a sub-regional strategy across the partnership in the past three years, which sets out the vision for the sub-region, but also the local priorities for Boston. We've got an economic growth strategy coming through the system at the moment as well. We feel there's more to do to deliver on that recommendation around communicating that to partners and ensuring they're engaged and understand that vision. And we're looking for the Lead Officer to do that with the new Director of Economic Growth, Pranali, when she starts on Monday of next week. So that's the first recommendation in the action plan and the intended course of action. Do you want me to take them one by one, Mr Chairman, or how would you like me to do it?
Yeah, I think we just go...
Shall we take questions as we go?
Yeah. If we have questions on any section, that might be the easiest way to do it and make sure we actually cover everything as well. So, any questions so far? Councillor Heinzad.
Thank you. Can you just elaborate what partners means in this report? What do you mean by partners?
So partners are those external organisations that we engage with. So it could be partners on a regional level. It could be partners on a national level, but of course it could be those local partners as well. So it's a whole mix of external organisations that we engage with to deliver our businesses as a council.
Next one then.
Okay, the next recommendation from the peers was around considering identifying senior officer capacity to support the Chief Executive and Leader to manage sovereign relationships and provide visible place leadership for Boston Borough Council. So the suggestion is that some of this capacity will come from the new Director of Economic Growth, once appointed. We know Michelle left last year, and we've had the team fill in that void for that period of time. But the intention is that the newly recruited director has quite a forward-facing role in terms of engaging with the business community and the local place in terms of ensuring there is that leadership from this council when communicating and engaging locally. That's the proposal around that particular recommendation.
Anybody any questions? No.
Okay, we then go on to the next action, which is undertake systematic engagement to gather and utilise customer insight to inform Boston Borough Council's priorities, service delivery and transformation. And you might recall from the annual delivery plan that was approved this year, there was an action in that which was around facilitating what we've called an intelligence hub. I think that's one of the key things to support the delivery of this action. So we've formed an intelligence hub internally within the organisation which pulls together lots of evidence from various sources that staff can easily access when developing policy. And the intention through another action in here is to make that available to members in due course as well. So we might be pulling on national data sets, local data sets, consultation feedback, but creating one place that we can go to to provide easily accessible data to inform policy development. That's one of the actions that we're looking to take forward to deliver on this particular recommendation. But also, we're looking to establish a resident survey. Again, I think it's some time since there was last a resident survey in the borough. Certainly, there hasn't been one since I've worked with the borough in 2020. So there is an opportunity to get that up and running again if we so wish and start to gather some intelligence on a more frequent basis directly from communities. So there's a mechanism to do that which we can establish.
Yeah, Councillor Gilbert.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a really important action, and I'm pleased to see it in the action plan. I just wonder, given the fact we have a very complicated community, particularly living in the town centre, whether or not we need to have as a specific action, something which relates to clearly engaging with the various communities that we have in Boston, rather than just kind of gathering it all up and assuming that community is a homogenous phenomenon. Because quite clearly, you know, if you live in the town centre, you know that it's not. And some of the challenges we face in the town centre relate to the fact we do have a number of people living with us who may not be fully conversant with the way that, you know, Boston Borough Council does its business. And so we have issues around fly tipping and issues of that kind. So what I'd like to see, if possible, is something which kind of broadens that out, but is much more specific about some of the new communities we've got here and how we can best support them, both practically and in terms of things like their health and education.
Councillor Price.
Thank you. Very often, when authorities set out to survey residents' opinions or consult people on their changes, they make do with putting on a limited-time exercise on their own website and expect people to go to it themselves, find it themselves and respond. And surprise, surprise, get very, very few responses. I would hope that if we're going to have regular resident surveys, we're going to make an effort to go out into the communities that Mike is talking about, certainly out to the villages, not just the town, to ask people very specific, or specific questions as possible, not just how do you feel about Boston? So that you can get a properly informed opinion that we can take action on.
Alison, are you in the table?
Yes, my question at the moment just is a sort of organisational one. I've written so much all over this when I read it. Could you just always say which page you're referring to, please?
Appendix B.
Yeah.
My pages aren't numbered, but I'm on the first page of the action plan on Appendix B.
All right, okay, that must be thirty-two then. Yeah, yeah, that's one.
Sorry, yeah.
Have we got different pages on here? Oh, sorry, I scribbled on this one, you see, not this one. Thank you.
Actually, I've got a comment, so I'll join in now. I seem to remember that when I was previously councillor, we used to actually have a market stall. We as councillors used to take it in turns to go and sit on it. And we'd have various questionnaires and things and highlight things to people. So is that something we could also do again? But anyway, thank you for that. Jody, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Taking on from councillor Price's point, we need to probably design the surveys ourselves because the current state, you know, where the current state of affairs, the survey, return of the survey. And generally, if we give out questionnaires, paper questionnaires, the return rate is very, very low. And major decisions are being taken from a return rate of 0.05%. So it's quite alarming. So we probably need to devise, have a discussion amongst ourselves to see what actually works. Because a lot of these surveys could also be qualitative focus group-based surveys, engaging with people wherever they are, reaching out and, you know, plan something like that, rather than focusing on the leaflet or surveys in the traditional survey model. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Danny.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. The only thing I want to mention and I want to follow up on councillor Gilbert. I think it would be very important to work on integration because the demographic of Boston is changing very rapidly all the time. There is, I think we will have a lot of problems where people not speak in English as first language, but then they will be having their own language. So it will be hard for them to get to our surveys. The second thing I want to touch on, if we will have surveys, we have to be very specific on the surveys and we have to touch on the problems we are facing on a daily basis in town. And also the health around the areas like Stand of Fenside, Wood Farm Road and these estates. I think we should check them more often and probably have contact the people more regularly to know what they need and what we need ourselves. So we can work on that. Thank you.
Councillor Richard Austin. No, no, you weren't. Okay, councillor Welbury.
Just to say, we could involve the parish councils because they have a lot of local knowledge. So specific questions to the parish councils and then garner their support. I was also in the marketplace on Wednesday and transported, had got a market stall and so had Lincolnshire information. And it was quite well attended. So I think that's quite a good idea.
Thank you. Councillor Alison Austin.
Thank you, Chairman. Just responding to councillor Welbury's comment. Of course, about fifty percent of us are not with parish councils. We are part of BTAC. So that in itself has a slightly different role, doesn't it? And I think my feeling is, because from the council point of view, I represent more parishes, not BTAC, that of course, issues in parishes are quite different from the issues within the town centre, mainly because of the demographics. I would have said, maybe you disagree with me, but they are... The parishes on the whole do have a local residence, shall we say. Okay, you know, I'm not making myself very clear, I'm sorry.
I think you're right. I mean, obviously, there's scope for both. We need to talk to our people living in our rural communities. But also, yeah, we must remember to, I know it sounds a bit strange, but talk to ourselves. So we will need to, you know, talk to BTAC and get help from BTAC on that. It's true. So... Mr Baller.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Just to add a bit of weight to this, I think nationally, the view is that the community and the public generally aren't trusting of public authorities. That's certainly the message that is being relayed. I think we all have to work really hard to kind of build up that, you know, openness, transparency and willingness to engage with ourselves. So I think we need to be really clear on this. It isn't about a different type of survey with different questions. I think it's constantly working day by day to change how the council appears to its residents, to kind of engender that willingness and want to engage. And I think touching on the point about the diversity that we have in the town, I think it's about making sure we've got those really strong links with the community leaders. Because I think that's where a lot of the value is. So we actually utilise other organisations' skills to get the message back from their own communities. So I think whilst one of the actions is very much a routine resident survey, I think that's only effective if we do that bigger piece of work, which I'm sure members will want to embrace.
I mean, I personally would argue that we actually should outsource something like this, in truth. I know it costs money. But really, the difference that, you know, bringing in an external source of knowledge, you know, who are actually used to doing these things for other authorities and things, I think actually initially anyway would help while we get hit the ground running. But yeah, it's all valid. Oh, councillor Iber.
When you talk about external agency, I'm just kind of on the point. These, even big organisations like King's Fund and all those organisations have a lot of recent published surveys have very, very limited return rates. So we're really mindful of that. And for example, I've been to Lincolnshire Health Watch's conference last month, and they had a survey with a return rate of 1,028 or something, which is actually, if you take the whole population of Lincolnshire, it's actually tiny. And they are making huge policy changes with relation to public health based on that kind of survey. So we need to actually kind of move away from the traditional survey methods. And I think we have to be quite innovative, like many of the councillors already said. We have to really look at tapping on the people's knowledge, parish councils, voluntary organisations and police and other kind of agencies. So I think we probably have to sit and devise something. And again, there are several methods, snowballing and all those methods to get data from difficult-to-reach communities and, you know, people with language difficulties and barriers and so on. So I think it is doable, but I think giving it off to another agent, external agency, you know, spending a lot of money is probably not really the... Thank you.
With your permission, Chair. Yeah, clearly, we're allowed to the fact there's no silver bullet to engaging communities with the experience, for example, of the town centre strategy, which we presented at this joint committee and also BTAC. And we used a whole range of different mechanisms to reach out to communities. We had a presence on the market on several occasions. We reached out to young people through schools and colleges. We use social media to reach populations that are further afield from the municipal building. So we are alive to the points that have been made by the committee. We absolutely will not treat it as an exercise that's purely on paper. We'll reach out, you know, through a range of different mechanisms. So it's a point that's been well made by this committee. I personally believe we've got expertise in-house to do that because we delivered that in terms of the town centre strategy. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next. Oh, councillor Gilbert.
Observation in that case. I mean, would it be worth, and I'm just throwing this out for a sort of conversational discussion, is it worth having a specific EDI-related action plan or action point, rather than just losing it in the more generic kind of description we've got on our action plan at the moment?
You have a look at that. Yeah.
Councillor Iber.
I think the response, I mean, for me definitely, I'm more involved because I'm a councillor now. But when I talk to my friends and people outside of the council, the impression, general public's impression about the council is definitely very positive. And the councillors, councillors are engaging more with the public. And I think it is a, maybe because I'm a councillor now, I'm more kind of unaware of these things. There could be a bias there, but I think other than that, even when you go to the town centre, or, you know, when you go to meetings and all that, the general response towards the council is a very positive one. Thank you.
I see. Next.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is broad support for that action. We just need to broaden it out to make sure we're engaging with the whole community. It needs to be an ongoing process. Okay, thank you. So the next one under that was maximise opportunities to engage with residents on levelling up and townspun initiatives. So I think what we've seen through some specific consultation on previous initiatives through those schemes have been, I mean, probably the words levelling up probably need tweaking following the election. But I think there's something about engaging with people on large schemes that are coming forward. Because when we've done consultation around levelling up and townspun, we've seen really good engagement from the community on those big programmes of work if we're engaging on something specific. So as we bring developments forward, as we start to bring forward some of the initiatives under those schemes, keep that ongoing dialogue with the community and ensure they've got the opportunity to help shape.
Be okay with that? Okay, next topic.
Quite, councillor Danny.
Councillor Danny.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. All I want to add is basically like the town fund and we know the BNM and the area is already probably under a process. Wouldn't it be wise if we put certain board on the top where people can read what's going on or what will be there? Because at the moment, a lot of people, they ask what's going on, what's going on, when is it going to happen? So you cannot give them an answer straight, why it's going to happen by this date. Because if I say something, I'll be lying to my, my consultant. This is the thing. Wouldn't it be nice to put, like I say, board like we did put like, you know, this is the, you know, the project, it will start this date or it will be soon, whatever. Just for them, if they pass by there, they can see it, they can read it and they will be at ease. Much better that way.
We can feed that back to the program delivery teams when they're bringing initiatives forward in future. We took that and we have done it in some examples already, I think, haven't we? Some of the bigger townspundy initiatives.
Yeah, just to confirm, we do do that, you know, in terms of the townspun projects that we are delivering against, we are putting up boards and communicating. So yeah, point well made, but yeah, understood. Yeah, there is, there is actually a board, yeah.
Councillor Iber.
Yeah, just picking up the point from the Chief Executive role. Engagement, you know, with the community leaders face to face. I think that's far better than any kind of survey or money we can spend in that sense. And so I'm kind of hoping that maybe we can go forward and formulate a group with the different community leaders that we've got in Boston. And we've got one already. Okay, that's great. Is that only met by the Cabinet? Or is that met by, who actually meets them?
It's open to all and it's through Nicola Holden, as Community Leadership Manager. So if you're not aware of it, I'll make sure you are aware of it and we'll circulate to this committee.
That's wonderful because I think, you know, that would really help with this action plan if we can have, have their feedback directly to us so that we can understand their issues and their problems and try to engage on more communities as we go forward.
Yep.
Just to reassure you, councillor Heinzad, that group meets monthly and is part of the consultation process and ongoing dialogue with the community. And they are consulted on everything that we do. So it's quite a comprehensive group. I think they meet on teams because it's so big. So that's in existence.
And I take it the peer group knew about these meetings when they come to this recommendation?
This is our action plan. We're discussing our actions, but yes, they would have, that would have been part of the pre-reading, wouldn't it?
It would. They would have been made aware of that. I think the actions we're suggesting are above and beyond what we're already doing. So we would consider, the reason that wouldn't be mentioned here is because it's considered as BAU for us within the authority now. And I must say, that's been one of the legacies of COVID for us, the fact we formed that group. We started at the start of COVID. It gives a really great way to engage with lots of groups that we probably hadn't engaged with very well for many years. So it has been, it has been successful from what I'm seeing from talking to officers. But we'll get the details circulated.
Councillor Alison Austin.
I think whatever we do, it's important that we go to the community and meet them where they would normally be. We did have something about, oh, was it Rosegarth or something? And it was in the CVS, I think. But of course, unless you knew it was there, you wouldn't have gone, would you? So we've really got to try and get to the population, not expect them to come to us.
Councillor Gilbert.
Yeah, just kind of picking up that point really and about consultation and about the town's fund initiatives. I mean, I wonder to what extent the public are in a position to actually inform some of the projects that we might actually try and develop, because I think Boston as a town centre has got areas, and we've discussed this endlessly over the years, areas of dilapidation. And it may be that some of this money could go some way towards alleviating some of those areas that have become dilapidated. I'm thinking particularly around some of the retail offering in the town centre. Some of our iconic buildings, which are currently in a bit of a state. And I think if the public were consulted, they would probably say that developing those buildings, getting them back into sort of good, you know, commercial use would be a way of spending town's fund money incredibly wisely and actually lifting the town up, you know, in terms of its appearance and amenity. Sorry, councillor Dorian.
Yeah, councillor.
Happy to help you there, councillor Gilbert. If you're talking about the long term plan for town's fund, you mean the new transfunding, yeah. There's just been an extensive consultation on that very fund where the public were invited. The, there was a specialist comms person went into schools. We, we did, they did as much as they possibly could. I think councillors were invited to take part in a consultation. Having said that, that's just to get us over the line for the first of August submission date. But it's a 10 year programme, so there will be other opportunities to do as you've just suggested. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Everybody happy?
Thank you. So the next action on the action plan, and this isn't too dissimilar to what I've just discussed already, it's about raising the strategic influence of the communications team. So it's about how we better communicate with our residents. And I think one of the things that we'd really like to do is upskill the communications team. We've got a very skilled team already, but we think we can look at how we better use new technology, but how we enable them to better influence and support the organisation in its communications activity. So there's a piece of development work internally that we're proposing there for the communications team. Okay, jumping on to the next page, which is the second page of the action plan. And again, the heading for this section given by the peers was to fully develop the benefits of transformation and support staff wellbeing and retention. So the first action or the first recommendation from the peers was to develop a multi-year, a robust multi-year transformation programme aligned to the medium term financial strategy plans vision and priorities. Now, we do have a transformation programme in the organisation. We have a programme that sits alongside the MTFS, which is about how we're going to deliver the MTFS requirements over the next few years, a programme of activities regularly reported into cabinet and falls from the annual delivery plan of the council. I think the peers were looking slightly more evidence that that was a multi-year plan. So there's something we need to do as officers when we bring the MTFS forward next year to demonstrate how that plan is delivering over multiple years. And Christine and I would pick up that particular action. The next one was around prioritise and accelerate the programme of service reviews and be bolder in these. So when the partnership established in 2021, there was the ambition to deliver a programme of service reviews. Some service reviews have taken place across the partnership. So for example, I share my service top to bottom across the three councils because we're a corporate service. And you'll know through the annual delivery plan, there's a programme of service reviews that are coming forward. I think the peers wanted to see a bit more pace around that service review plan. And the leaders of the three councils are pushing that service review plan along with the leadership team to make sure we bring that forward as quickly as possible. And we've got a number which are in the system at the moment. So for example, regulatory services is going to be coming forward soon and a number of others. So I think we've got evidence that we are seeking to accelerate the service review plan with a view to achieving efficiencies and creating more efficient services that can do more for, for communities. And then the next part of that is around ensuring there's a communications plan that sits alongside those service reviews as well, because there's a recommendation or there's an acknowledgement in there that when we're committing to service views and taking them forward, staff need to be on that journey, need to understand the direction of travel and understand the purpose of the service reviews. I think councillor.
Councillor Danny, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just had a probably question for you. Gilbert, you know, you went too quick on it. Is raise the strategic influence of communications function? And then you have the next one, which is deliver a training programme to support the development of the communications functions. It just last week, we were on the audit and governance and basically at the risk management, the internal communication is in red.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so we haven't got a good, yeah, it was at risk management, it was in red, our, our, our internal communication with the, within the officers, I think, and, and the whole strategic partnership. And that was admitted on the meeting. So we haven't got a good communication on, on that level. Will we be able to deliver, you know, you know, the services, what the one we're discussing now?
Councillor Danny, the risk register is highlighting risks. So the risk to us is bad. It doesn't actually mean the communications are bad. It's if it goes wrong, it becomes bad. And that's the risk register. It's not actually saying the service itself is bad. It's if that goes wrong, it's a bad risk to us. It's not saying it is going wrong. It's the risk if it goes wrong. No, it's not saying it's.
Thank you, Madam Leader. So how are we going to build a better communication if we're working on this peer review? To build a good communication with the outside world, which is our residents. So that's where I'm coming from.
What I'm saying is the risk register isn't saying our communication is bad. What it's saying is if our communication doesn't work, it's a big risk to us. So it actually isn't, you know, saying the actual communications are bad. That's the point I'm trying to make. Councillor Butler.
Thank you, Chair, for letting me speak. My point is around with the service reviews and speeding them up to make, you know, making, making them go quicker, basically implementing them sooner. I'm all in favour of that, but I also want to raise the point that sometimes it's better to be that little bit longer because it may harm our staff, it might harm our retention. And at the end of the day, our staff are our biggest asset. So sometimes by just saying, instead of going, oh, we'll do it in six months, we'll do it in 12 months, may naturally lead to staff leaving through their own accord, rather than us having to offer redundancies and such lights as that potentially. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, thank you. So continuously review.
Thank you. So the next action was continuously review and align capacity to ensure ability to deliver priorities. I think capacity is probably an issue that every organisation, the public sector faces at the moment. They've all got huge customer demand coming in, huge ambitions as councils and no growing money to be able to necessarily increase capacity for kind of the core services. We do know that with a number of programmes where we've scaled external money, there is capacity funding that comes alongside, comes alongside those. We are committing through this action plan to continue to review capacity in services and use some of that capacity funding that we do receive through those schemes to bolster resources. But also we have a transformation reserve in each council as well. So where a service does need a small sum of money to support, to get over a hurdle at a particular point in time, they can dip into that reserve through the approval of leadership team and members to bring in some short term capacity to help with a particular, particular issue. So that's those two actions that would deliver on that particular recommendation. One around using capacity funding we receive through external schemes. And the second one to use internal capacity funding that we've got through our transformation reserve as and when appropriate.
The next one?
The next one's around create strategic senior HR capacity to drive the programme of activity around terms and conditions and pay spine to mitigate potential future risks and costs. So I have regular conversations as the client lead with P S P S around HR capacity. And we have actually brought additional capacity into P S P S. You'll recall at your May council meeting, you agreed a programme of work around terms and conditions. And that was about alignment across the partnership, recognising that it would be beneficial to, to the workforces across all three councils. We have brought some specific capacity in to deliver on that programme. And we do keep regular dialogue with HR. So if we have a programme of service reviews, for example, we will ensure that is adequately resourced by HR. But if additional capacity is needed, they know they can come and talk to us and have that adult conversation about how we go about meeting that, that need and demand.
Mr Willis.
Yeah, Chair, if I could just add to James's comments, I'm sure it won't have escaped members' attention that when you see some of these recommendations, they kind of conflict with each other a little bit. So you, you kind of get a feel for how difficult this appears to come in for a very short period of time and reach a series of recommendations. So we can see very clearly that they want multi-year transformation programmes, they want to speed up service reviews, they want to do more around comms and more engagement, yet they're also telling us we need to be wary of capacity. So I think our view on that, when we've discussed it, is that arguably forming the partnership as we, we have has given us a head start in those capacity challenges that we have that I think many of the peers were quite envious of. So I think when we look at the recommendations, whilst they're all individual recommendations, they do need to be considered in the round. I just think it's quite a helpful contextual point to make.
Moving on.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, next one.
Thank you. So the next one was formalisation of protocol for councillor triage system. So you might remember after the partnership initially formed, we put in place a mechanism to try and help councillors navigate the partnership. We recognised that it was going to become complex when you were talking to officers from other authorities. So we put in place the triage process via Alison Hull, who's kind of a very respected Boston officer. And Alison's kind of performed that role for us for the last two or so years. We do still get feedback from time to time, though, that members do struggle to navigate the process sometimes in terms of reaching the relevant, relevant officers. So what we want to do is take a step back, have a look at how the triage processes work, take some feedback from members. And then look at how we shape that going forward to ensure it's meeting your, your needs and helping you get to where you want to get to in the organisation to access the information you need to do your, do your jobs as ward councillors. The next action is around establishing a member internet. So earlier I spoke about this intelligence hub that we've formed, that sits within the staff internet, but we've now got the ability to create a members internet on the same technology that could provide access to some really helpful resources for you to access, to be able to do your, to do your ward business. And that includes giving you access to things like the intelligence hub. So it would be accessible through your iPads, through the press of a button or your laptops. And we'd want to bring something like that forward. We know East Lindsay members are also very keen on that as are South Holland. So it could be something we could deliver across the partnership relatively, relatively quickly.
Both councillor and Austin.
Right. Have we started doing that? Because if not, why is it green? You know, I can't understand why everything has been put as green. I mean, to me, it hasn't happened.
It's green because at the point of bringing it forward, I'm committing to deliver it by the 30th of November and I'm still on track for that timescale. So at the moment, bringing the action plan forward at this point in time, we are confident we can hit all these timescales. That's the reason it's green at this point in time. If something were to slip, you would see through your reporting that it slipped to amber if we had a plan, but it was off track or red, if it was completely off track and we had no plan around it.
Yeah, Chair, just to say, there's a, there's a key, there's a key to what the colours mean within the pack. So that should guide you as you go through the pack.
Thank you. So the next one was training for councillors and senior officers on respective roles, behaviours and code of conduct. So Boston, I think, is really fortunate to have a constituted member development group, but I don't think it's met for some time. There was also an action in the annual delivery plan for this year for the partnership, which was around formulating across council, member development group as well, to share learning opportunities and jointly commission and consider what member training requirements there might be. So the intention would be to get the members development group running again, so it can identify training needs, which will then pick up things like code of conduct, roles, responsibilities, behaviours, et cetera, and look at what training is needed in that, in that space and what it might like to commission. I think you do have a reasonably healthy training budget here for members, from what I remember previously. So it's how that can be used for, for the benefit of those purposes. The next action that sits alongside that is the workforce development board to consider training requirements for senior officers. So we have a workforce development board that I chair, and that's around delivery of the workforce development strategy. And we pick up officer training through that particular, through that particular route. And we'd look in the context of this action just to review what we've got in the training plan for this year and what else we might like to add to it to deliver on that recommendation. The next one that sits under that is the review of officer member protocol as part of the constitutional review. So there's the opportunity to consider the officer member protocol. As part of the constitutional review, that you're probably aware is underway at the moment, and I'm sure members will be engaged in that as it comes forward. The next action or the next recommendation from the peers is top.
Oh, sorry, councillor.
Yes, just to thank you for that. Regarding the training of the councillors and officers, obviously on page 15 of the, the main report, the peer team heard examples of councillors and officers' roles and responsibility being blurred. Peers heard concerns at the time councillors' behaviours have fallen short of expectation, expected standards and staff need to feel supported by senior officers. Obviously, this is a written report and I'm sure that you had a chance to talk to the peer team a lot more in depth. Can you give a little bit more background behind that statement in the report? Is it one councillor? Is it 30 councillors? Is it? What is the kind of percentage?
Mr Butler.
Yeah, let me help with that. Well firstly, the peers don't feedback the confidence that's been shared with them through the interviews they go through. So it's not intended to be a who did what to who and what's been said. What they do, they see a very limited number of people over a three day period. And it's quite reasonable that they could see a different group of 80 people over three days and come up with a different set of recommendations. So we have to treat what they say with a degree of caution. I think what we've done though, we've recognised that we're officers working in the only three way partnership in the, in the country. We've got a capital programme which is larger than the council's capital programme of the last 20 years. And the extent of what we're working on is way different to what it was two, three, four years ago. So naturally, it's quite a challenging role in local government. And we've heard that said, that some of our senior officers are now working at a level which puts them at the top of the tree in terms of district council, borough council work. Likewise, at the elections last May, we had a high turnover of elected members. And we had a lot of people enter the councillor role for the first time ever. So I think what the peers and the LGA have recommended, and they do this quite often, they've kind of said in the report, you've got off to a great start, but don't underestimate how challenging your roles are. So they've offered ways forward for us to keep growing and developing. And some of that, I think, has been around a little bit of a cultural shift in the council. So the kind of feedback that the peers picked up is we have more of a kind of a performance framework now than perhaps what we may have had customary year in year in the council. So I think they're suggesting that you are in that environment now where use all those aids that are available to you, be it internal training. And they were very complimentary actually about the internal training that members had had since May. And in fact, they had some feedback that I think members had found that a lot of time and a lot of energy expended on it. And a lot of it was learnt really early on, all at the same time and very quickly. And I think there was a recognition that members probably need to revisit some of that and go back and have, you know, more time to digest and take it on. So I think it was really just a general reflection that it's hard work. You know, don't lose sight of the offer that the LGA can give and don't lose sight of the, the offer that our own development boards can play in this. So yeah, I think we treat that positively as a, as a learning council.
We must remember the LGA do sell services. Just a comment.
Just to follow up, obviously, I see a target of 30th of September for some of these. Is this training likely to be in house or are you thinking about bringing in outside bodies to do this training? Or is that not really been consulted on yet as a way forward?
I mean, I don't, we had not really looked at the training to underpin this yet. That's the next piece of work to be done once the action plan's supported. So we'll look at what the actual training needs to look like there. actual training needs to look like thereafter.
Lauren?
Yeah, thank you. Just in response to councillor Isaac's point, you know, firstly, it looked quite alarming, that comment. And I wanted councillors to be reassured that, I, like Rob, am going to look at this as positively as possible. Certainly, in my experience as being leader just over a year, I've only had one instance of per-member behaviour reported to me, and I dealt with that immediately by reporting it to the monitoring officer. And I know that the monitoring officer then picked that up with that elected member. So there are processes in place, we will follow those processes, but we're all on a learning journey. And, you know, we want the highest conduct and behaviour from our elected members, and we must all strive for that at all times. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Danny?
I just want to compliment all these discussions. I think it starts from, if we keen respect to others, who will be respected. It's simple as that. We don't need to waste time or anything, I think. Respect, it's due when it's due, it's due. And I think courtesy is one of the main things. And I do believe that everybody respects everyone. And I think the respect is shared between us all. And we can all work towards one goal, is to make the town better. And that's the main drive for every one of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So talking of training, I remember one week we had a load of actors come in. It was great fun. No idea what we were trained on, but it was fun. Anyway.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So the next item was top team development between Cabinet and SLT/CMT. Again, it was recognition that there's new members in the authority. It takes time to build relationships, and it was just about getting time together on a regular basis between the leadership team. The Cabinet happens regularly anyway. We have Cabinet away days when we have really healthy, productive agendas and talk about kind of core business effects in the councils. Essentially, we think more of that is kind of the action there, I think, picking up on key topics that are coming forward for discussion. The one thereafter is LGA political leadership development and mentoring, and that might tie back into the point the chairman just made about trying to suggest we might purchase some LGA products. So there were a number of development programmes the LGA do provide in the leadership space, and that's probably something for the member development group to have a look at when they form. The next one that sits under that suite of actions was develop a comprehensive programme of learning and development for elected councillors, including training on overview and scrutiny. So again, we've got the member development group as the formation of the member development group as a core action that sits alongside that. And then the delivery of some more support and training in the scrutiny space as recommended. Any questions on that? No? Okay. We then go on to the to enhance governance and mitigate strategic risks. And the first action the peers suggested was take external advice on the PSPS board governance to seek assurance that structures reflect good practice. So that's a piece of advice we've already asked Lewis to commission and report back to us. So there would have been advice, and there has been advice from lawyers in the formation of the existing joint venture agreement and management agreement, which underpins the company. But it's just taking a second look, I think, at that and just making sure it still remains appropriate and fit for purpose. The next action is to take actions to provide reassurance that concerns raised by external audit have been fully addressed. Now, Rob's probably better answering, pardon the detail on this one than I, but I think, I don't think there are concerns anymore from what I understand. I think it was a 2122 audit report they looked at. It was the most recent, so it's quite dated information. But there are no concerns, to my knowledge, that the auditors have got at this point in time.
Yeah, just to add to that, it's usual for the peers, before they come and do a peer review, to engage with the external auditor, just to get their input into the work that they're about to carry out. And I think at the time, the last available annual audit report that was available to the peers was the 2122 report. And at that time, I think we had a number of internal audit recommendations around financial systems, which were below where we hoped them to be. That's not the case now, they've all been addressed. So that was a matter that I think the peers needed to include, because it's what they'd heard. But we're very satisfied that they've all been dealt with.
Thank you. So the next action was take further steps to achieve seamless working between PSPS and Boston Borough Council to drive transformation. So there's a recognition, I think, in that, that PSPS are really important to helping us drive transformation, HR, finance, are two kind of, and yeah, kind of core functions that sit within the, and IT are core functions that sit within the company that can really help drive transformation. There's been an awful lot of transformation in PSPS, the stuff we can learn from them, we can work more closely with them as we bring forward our own transformation. So there's a couple of actions we've put here, having had discussions with Lewis. One of the actions that Lewis really wants to drive forward is improve communication between the company and all three councils, and to better engage with the three councils. So the first piece of evidence that he's provided is there's going to be a briefing note three times a year launched for members called Your Lat Co. I think you will have received that recently via email. I'm pretty sure the first one has gone out. We've got subject-specific briefings. So for example, on the 29th, I think, the 28th or 29th of this month, there's a PSPS briefing around artificial intelligence, and how they're looking to utilise some of that in their business to drive efficiency and meet some of the service demand. And it's quite impressive, I think, some of the stuff that they're doing. And then the company to continue to engage with us on an ongoing basis around transformational activity. And when we do transformation, the teams get together and they have people from PSPS on those project teams, because they recognise the value that they bring. And that's all about kind of building those relationships between the two. And then the second action that sits under that particular recommendation is that one around PSPS being an active part in the transformation of the organisation as I've just described. The final recommendation from the peers was to embed the commitment to climate action and services, to deliver green ambition, and address key risks to Boston Borough Council. So I think there was a recognition there that kind of the formal commitment to the green agenda is fairly new for the council, in terms of it being adopted through the subregional strategy, and the foundation's still been put in place to deliver on that. So there's a couple of actions that we've put alongside that. Firstly, roll out carbon literacy training to all officers and members, so they understand how, so we as officers understand how the actions we take day to day are contributing to our environmental impact. But the same for members as well as community leaders. And then the next action is to agree and embed an environmental monitoring tool for informing decisions made by members. So actually, when decisions are coming forward, we've got something we can test those decisions against to look at what the impact's going to be, and to make sure that's fully understood through the decision-making that we take as a council, as a cabinet. So they're the recommendations that have been proposed to deliver against the actions in the peer review report. The intention would be that it comes back to you on a six monthly basis with updated RAG rating. Hopefully, nothing will have slipped. We'll work really hard to try and keep it on track. But certainly, you've provided some really helpful feedback this evening, I think, that helps me shape the final action plan with a leader, and hopefully take something through to Cabinet in a couple of weeks' time. So thank you all for your contributions. Very much appreciated.
I've got one thing, just because you were talking on that last, on the one that roll out carbon literacy training. You actually said it during your speech, you're not there. You actually said officers, members and community leaders. And I think actually it would be good to add community leaders into that recommendation.
So we could offer it out to the community.
Just, I think that would be good.
Yeah.
You actually said it when you read it, but it was sort of. So then we're now on to sort of general comments or specific ones at the last second. Yeah, so councillor Woodlift, because he's not spoken, and then councillor Danny and councillor Austin.
Thank you, Chair. I have no right to speak here, really, because I'm a councillor. But I did just wonder, I might have looked at the action plan.
Is your mic on, Stephen?
Sorry?
Is your mic on?
Yes, it's green here. Oh, well, I'll shout. I'm sure I'll go through.
Can I continue?
Yes, please.
Right. I read through the actual pan. I had to go out, unfortunately, I missed something. But I just did wonder about on page 19 of the report, it says here, Boston Borough Council should agree an action plan to address organisational health performance figures. And I am very concerned about what I read above it, about sickness and absence. They can increase two days per full-time employee between quarter four 2023 and say in 2023/24, with 52% of all absences related to mental health, mental ill health. And I think that's a very serious issue. And I just can't see inside the action plan where Boston Borough Council should agree to an action plan to address organisational health performance, because maybe I've missed something, but I don't know quite where that is.
Thank you.
I'll leave it at that, anyway.
Yeah. If I could respond to that. So it didn't form a formal recommendation from the LGA as part of their suite of recommendations, but we do take that incredibly seriously. So we look at health data on a regular basis for the workforce, and talking about mental health absences in particular. I think for the last financial year, there was about 2,900 days lost across the three councils through mental health absence. Over, I think it was 1,900 of those days were non-work related. So I think we need to keep in context that quite a lot of the sickness absence isn't because of stuff that's going on within the authority. People have got a lot going on in their personal lives quite often as well. And we've been doing incredible amount, or I think it's an incredible amount, to try and put support packages in place within the organisation to ensure that if colleagues need any support, they can access either the employee assistance programme, or some more innovative programmes we've accessed and created more recently. We've also, just through senior leadership team, agreed to trial for six months, some mental health therapists, and we're just in the process of putting that in place now, whereby it's more of a preventative measure. So if we think somebody isn't in a good place, we can try and support them through that before they get into a place where they need to be away from work for a period of time. So we are doing lots around mental health and sickness absence generally. And also, we have a programme of mental health first aiders, which has been really successful across the partnership too. So we have got a plan of action around sickness absence that sits separate to this, but it is very much delivered by my team in tandem with HR. Okay.
I'm off line, aren't I? It needs to be in here, even if you're doing it. It needs to be in here somewhere so that you can see it. I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Woodlift, if you want to, I'll answer you. Well, okay, I'll talk to you back then. As James quite rightly pointed out, although the peers mentioned it in the body of the report, it didn't form one of their recommendations. And the action plan is very much driven by the recommendations that the peers made. However, I agree with what you said, councillor Woodlift. The mental health and the physical health of our staff is a priority for this administration, and for all of us, I'm sure. We all feel the same. And so I'm more than happy to, this is what this committee's about, is to take your recommendations on board. We'll take them through to Cabinet. We can, James will come up with a form of words, we'll agree a form of words, which again, you can, you will have time to edit, amend or make suggestions prior to Cabinet taking a formal decision on it. I'm more than happy to add that in. But just to explain to you, the only reason it wasn't there formally is because it wasn't part of the formal recommendation. Now, happy to work with you. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Danny?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just come to the last point about the net zero and the environment. I mean, it's fact that the number of cars has increased in Boston. So we have a lot of cars. And then therefore, we will have a lot of hotspots where there is a lot of, you know, carbon monoxide, you know, going on. So is there any plans for the future to work with the police? Because some cars that are unfit to be in the streets, and believe in me, I seen the black smoke coming out of a lot of cars.
Yeah, I mean, there will be a programme of work around the wider climate change agenda for us, the action we're taking in that space, but I couldn't articulate that here.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Councillor Danny, you'll be pleased to know that the draft plan for the long-term plan for towns has a focus on the environment, has a focus on the health of the community. So when that plan comes forward, and you have the ability to read it, I'm sure you'll be pleased at what's in there. What you mentioned specifically around vehicles that might not be roadworthy is more a matter for Lincolnshire Police. But I'd be happy to take that forward. We've just had a community priority setting meeting on Monday. I'd be happy, and the next one's not for another quarter, be happy to feed those comments through to Inspector Cotton on your behalf. And then I can take it forward to the priority setting meeting in the next quarter. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Madam Leader, for your response. That's very, you know, I'm very happy with the programme and what we are doing at the moment. That's a good step for us to work on the town, on our health, on our environment, on our residents. I'm very pleased with that. And I can assure you that I do my part with the police as well. So I will inform if there is anything wrong or something to be addressed. It's just for us for the future, if we can work with local authorities, it will be even beneficial for us and give us more confidence and give us more, it's sort of a trampoline for our future, basically. We can build a good future. But thank you very much for your answer. Thank.
Councillor Richard Austin?
Thank you, Chair. I was very pleased to see that the feedback report highlighted what a unique opportunity we had in the anniversary coming up, the 400th anniversary that was coming up. And it's coming up very quickly now, and it's terribly important. We don't squander this, because it's got so much potential to enhance the economics of Boston. It's a big subject, it's got many facets, and we need long-term plans in place. And if we're going to be effective, then in 2030, those plans need to be worked on now. It's no use leaving them till a couple of years before the event for some of the things that we need to do. Now, my concern is that I'm aware that the officer group is working on it, and we get a little bit of feedback from what's happening. But I do feel there's not enough member engagement at the moment with the subject. And I'd like to think that if we had a cross-party member steering group, that that would develop more engagement with the elected members. And that really ought to be across all three of our partners, because this affects both East Lindsay and South Holland, as well as Boston. I'd just like to emphasise that.
Councillor Jordan, you'd like to come back on that?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. So thank you for pointing that out, councillor Austin. You're absolutely right. We have, as an administration and cabinet, have decided this is a strategic priority for this council, and that you're absolutely right, work must start immediately on working towards the anniversary of the founding of Boston, Massachusetts. So that work is embryonic, but it is in hand. The vision is there. We've had meetings with the relevant officers, the portfolio holders here tonight. She's very, very driven and very passionate about it. Whether they, it remains to be seen whether there'll be a cross-party working group within the member corps. I think it's a little bit bigger than that, if I'm being honest, councillor Austin. I think that we need a bigger vision, an umbrella organisation that we can take a lead on, certainly as a council, but we need to bring in everyone who's going to be working towards this very important anniversary. However, we will keep you informed and consult you as the project develops. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Austin?
I don't like doing this, but I did want to go back to the previous topic that we were talking about regarding air quality. We have a desperate shortage of, in some areas, of public transport. And this is something that concerns me. All right, where I live, all right, I've got a car that's reasonably, I hope, very environmentally friendly. But if I wanted, I'm a mile and a quarter from the town centre, yet I've got to go to a mile, for a mile to get to the nearest bus. I mean, this is the problem. So we have got a lot of people using their own cars because there just isn't the public transport.
Is there anybody else? Councillor Martin?
I just want to come back on the, the point that Alison Austin has made. Whilst obviously, public transport is ever-changing. And I remember getting on the bus from the local bus stop, obviously there's a collect call as well. And I guess the, the way we've got to look at public transport is it's ever-changing. Do we want a, a large double decker bus chugging around through Boston with five or six people on it? Or do we want a more dynamic thing that you can ring up, say, look, I want to go into town on this date at this time. It takes a bit of pre-planning, but it still costs two pound and it's almost a direct door-to-door service.
Yes. I mean, just a reminder to members that as members of scrutiny, you can bring up these topics for scrutiny to look at. So obviously, I'm not very sure which of the two committees it would be. But obviously, if members of scrutiny feel that we should be looking at the future of our bus services and what level we've got, that is a perfectly valid item for us, one of the scrutiny committees to look at. So just please remember this, if there are things that are worrying you, you know, you can come, as members of scrutiny, just bring them up at your committee and we can at least look into them a bit. I've got a few moments, if anybody else hasn't. So the first one is, the leaders had, obviously, this is going to be published once we've, the actual report from the peers. And, yeah, I welcome the report. It's a great report. Yeah, and we do come out well of it, rightly so. And it's, we've got some targets which we're working towards. The only problem is this is written in council techno babble. And if you expect a member of the public to look at this and get past the first three sentences, I, I just feel that we do need, if we are going to publish, what we have to do. If, if somebody could in English write a little phrasey that people will actually read and get the story over. And then people who then do have, maybe are then triggered by that to go further fine. But people aren't going to read this and it's a shame because it's good. And so that's my, my first one. And the other one is not, again, not a moment particularly. Within the body of the report, there's a mention of scrutiny, acting maybe earlier in the process. And I understand, again, that that isn't a, hasn't come through as a recommendation, which was not, but I'm a problem. But I do think, again, it is something maybe, maybe as both chairs of scrutiny need to be mindful of. We do need to maybe try and engage more on making sure things are coming to scrutiny slightly earlier in the process, rather than scrutinising the actual document, you know, and things. So that's just something I just wanted to raise while we're here. But otherwise, unless anybody has anything else, councillor Gilbert.
Yeah, just one thing, just for the purpose of clarification in my own head, basically. But there's reference on page five or page 11, big, big 11, little 5, to the borough not delivering on its capital programme and it being a significant risk with significant slippage having occurred in recent years. Is anything specific in the action plan dealing with that? You may already have explained it to us, but I, I wonder whether I might have missed it.
No, there isn't anything specific in the action plan. My understanding is that it isn't slippage as such, it's profiling in the budget was my understanding. Rob, I don't know whether you're able to help. Sorry to throw you.
No, it's okay, James. It's a good point. It's something that I think we're, we're very alive to. So if you look at projects that we've got going on, the Rosegarth Square project, the swimming pool, et cetera. All of those projects are, let's say, hindered, but it's quite normal for such expansive, big projects to have legal issues, to have financing issues. We all know that we've had huge inflationary pressures on contract prices over the, the last 18 months. And now we have a change in national government. So all of those external factors make delivery a real challenge. So I think that, that the peers are correct to say it's unusual for a local authority your size to have so much activity. We want to make sure that you're aware of these risks that you carry, which I'd like to think we are.
Thank you. From the chair, can I move this committee or councillor Dorian?
Thank you, Chair. Just to answer your penultimate two points. Yes, I, I agree entirely that a pre-seed, plain English version of what's been written here, a nice succinct summary would be absolutely appropriate to do as a press release for residents. And I'll work with James and comms on that. And to your second point, I think scrutiny adds such, can add such value to the work of the administration. And I really wanted things to be different this year. In fact, every document that came to Cabinet in the first sort of four months, I asked to go to scrutiny. Until Rob took me to one side and said, you can't keep doing that. There's, there's too much to be scrutinised. So we kind of reached a compromise where it was developments that incurred spending a lot of money or major policy changes that would come before both scrutiny committees. However, I do take the point that perhaps there is a stage that we have missed that in, in our policy development somewhere, at that earlier stage, there is a role for scrutiny. I'd be more than happy to look at that.
Don't get me wrong, I, I'm more than happy with how it's gone so far. Because obviously, a lot of the things that have been coming actually predate this administration, almost the work with them and things. So it isn't, it's just more, you know, that we, as chairs, we've just got to make sure we read the forward plan more. So isn't a criticism of them.
No.
This was more a criticism of me as chair. That, you know, we need to be aware of what the forward plan is, just so that we are highlighting that this thing that's been looked at in six months' time, we do want to come to scrutiny.
Yes, you link that to your work programme. Absolutely.
That's what I'm saying. It was more, you know, that, and it was a slight dig that some reports are being added to my agenda quite late.
Okay, okay. And I think that's maybe a capacity issue, which we are trying to address.
Yeah, but that's, but that was, no, but it isn't a criticism of the system from your side. It is that scrutiny has to be more aware of what's going on themselves.
Thank you, Chair. If I could just finish one point, and it's to say that I am actually really proud of the fact that, that more than ever, scrutiny are taking our documents before Cabinet makes decisions. Because for too often, in days gone by, shall I say, we were scrutinising documents after a decision had been made. And it kind of, the horse had bolted by that time. So I am pleased that we're working well and I do think both scrutiny committees are working well. But with a little bit of development and training, could be even better, just like Cabinet.
And I'm more than happy, as I have said in public before, you know, on this iteration of the council that I'm on, I have felt much more involved and much more knowledgeable and much more, things are just much more open than they were historically. So I have no problem with that. It's just more, you know, I'm just trying to get maybe scrutiny members aware that they could, you can bring things up. You can look at, you know, you can all go to the forward plan and see something and think, well, I think we should be looking at that. And so it just, you know, we, we just, as a scrutiny committee, we need to be slightly more proactive ourselves as well. But anyway, from the chair, I would like to move that we welcome the report of the peer review, that we request that Cabinet take on board the items we've raised tonight. And that an overview is kept of those other, of those other items raised in the report that haven't become recommendations. Because some of them, I think, we, we are mindful of, we just need to involve them. But I'm happy to move that from the chair. Is it seconded? Councillor Danny, all those in favour, please share. Carriage unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time. I think tonight was very, very good value for us all. And obviously, as Mr. Gilbert said, we will be getting.